Yeah, sorry.
Is that hard?
Yes.
Sorry.
It's hard.
I'm sorry.
You're done?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is now 6:30. I'm here right now as counsel. Meeting for February 6th, 2024. Order of the Director of the White House calling councilmembers of the present, Councilmember Garberro, Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Blais, Councilmember Conilson, Councilmember Palvinus, and myself, your right. For Section 22.039 and Local Government Code, the order has been established for this meeting. Today, Pastor Smith from St. Edward Church will give the invitation, and then we'll go into the pledge of allegiance.
All right, y'all, very good, Lord. We thank you so much for today. And we thank you for this community and everything you do in this community. Lord, I know it's been a blessing to me and my family. We thank you for the people in this community, Lord. I thank you for the men and women that you've chosen to lead this community. Lord, I pray that you give them vision, give them understanding of the direction that you want us to go. And, Lord, I know it's a job that holds a lot of weight, and I'm going to carry it well. So I thank you for them. I thank you for your guidance and the ladies, Lord. We thank you for your son, Jesus, and the sacrifice you gave us with him. Lord, we love you. So, Jesus, in your prayer, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to your people. I believe in our strength in America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So now I recall the input before the order to be signed up. We're from Scott Morgan. Can I start? I want you to run this one.
Hello, everyone. Mayor. I'm here. Just standing here. Hello, everyone, mayor, council. Thanks for having me. My name is Scott Morgan. I was trying to read here. After the city councilwoman was just arrested, I spoke out against the arrest. There were police chief, I think, Kentrell, the sergeant of the OBR, Terry O'Nara. Kentrell told me I was not on the team. Kentrell previously sought the false complaints against former chief Jason Jordan. Kentrell has told me or said to me, "You are either with us or against us." Kentrell Obrant had many comments about Jordan. I don't care if he's a board. I also reported illegal conduct to Mayor Michael Pappas. I reported illegal conduct to city councilwoman Misty Rodriguez. Due to my reports, I suffered retaliation by Chief Kentrell, Sergeant Obrant. I was wrongfully terminated. I received a dishonorable discharge, my fault. This is punishment retaliation for opposing legal acts and civil rights violations. I'm asking you to reverse this punishment, to rescind my termination, my fault. Thank you.
Now, just a way, done, maybe? I say it right.
Yes, sir. Do you think?
You have five minutes also, sir. How much you? No, I'm using that left.
I'm counsel for Scott Morgan. So what's his grievance about? He's here to present his grievance to me. So, how Texas Whistleblower Act, Civil Rights violations, retaliation, and illegal termination. I wrote the city secretary asked to be put on the agenda. Did you get substantive response? Did you hear from the city attorney? And I checked out the agenda, the economy agenda. So we're here talking about this issue in the public comments. Scott Morgan seeks reinstatement for employment. He complains that his termination was illegal, and it was. The Godly Police Department and the City Godly acted illegally. Y'all know that. You had your city councilwoman arrested last year. You're now in a federal lawsuit over violations of her civil rights. Scott Morgan objected to that as a police officer. He complained about other illegal actions. He refused to participate in illegal actions, and he suffered termination. So termination is illegal under Texas Whistleblower Act. It's illegal under the Texas government code, Section 614. It's illegal under the Texas Constitution, termination of speech. It's even illegal under your own ordinances. Godly ordinance 36.03 reserves the right to terminate to the council. Scott Morgan wasn't terminated by this council or by the prior council. There's case law in the legal court of appeal that the language in your statute, your ordinance, serves at the pleasure of the governing body. That reserves the termination right to the governing body. So you can fix that. I understand you recently passed an ordinance to take away more powers from the mayor. I haven't seen that. I'll look over your agendas in time, and I'll get that. The new police chief, Mr. Kentrell, issued a dishonorable discharge. Scott Morgan, we're appealing that. I've already served discovery on your lawyers, asking to take their positions and get answers to questions about that. That's in the F5 proceeding. The City of Godly and its officials don't have immunity under the Whistleblower Act. The nice thing, and the good news I bring to you tonight, is you do have immunity for the civil rights violations. And the way these cases are defended, and this is what I handle, is the governing body, you, says, "We didn't know. We didn't know these rogue employees were doing these bad things." But in fact, you did know. Because, as my client mentioned, we reported illegal conduct to Mr. Rodriguez. We reported illegal conduct to Mr. Pappas. And now you're hearing it from me. And you know your own ordinance. You're charged with the knowledge of your ordinance. So you have the duty, it's similar to a fiduciary duty, to be aware. And you certainly are aware of your ordinance, which again reserves that termination right to this council. So we're here tonight to ask you to put this on the agenda. Because you can't do anything about it tonight, as you're aware, because you can't act on public comment stuff unless you already got it on the agenda. Rescind the illegal action. That's what you need to do. Put it on the agenda. Rescind it. Because you have the choice to do that. Your other choice is not to rescind it with knowledge, not that you have the knowledge. Then you ratify the actions of your rogue employees, and then you are responsible as a city. So you're in a federal lawsuit. You've got good lawyers. I understand Mr. Rodriguez is a good lawyer.
Yes.
Taylor Olson, they're a good firm. I have other cases with them, have had cases with them for years. Darrell Noga is representing the former mayor, and I have a case with him right now. Thomas Brandt, representing the city, he's your lawyer in the federal lawsuit, no him. I have a case with his firm. These are the cases I handle for a living. I've turned down 95% of these cases. So you should ask yourself, why is this guy from Richardson come all the way down to Godly, representing this former police officer? And I'll tell you why. Because he's got a rock solid civil rights case and a rock solid legal termination case. We ask that you rescind the termination. We're in a state of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman.
Moving on to mayor and council committees and places of proclamation. First, non-skeptical conceding. The Senate agenda, we're going to discuss the possible action on approval of the Godly City Council minutes in the regular meeting held on January 16th, 2022. You should have received a copy.
So all change on the correct copy?
The correction where the action taken for the executive session?
There's a correction of Monday. Councilmember Blais made second motion. And I think it was mistimed to see what the outcome was. If this was in the end, it's confusing.
So we publish in the section we set this meeting to speak. I'll make a motion to defer the verdict in minutes as presented. Also, I mean...
Councilmember, that first day motion was second by Councilmember Conilson to approve the minutes. Any more discussion? Councilmember Garberro?
Aye.
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 Motion approved, I'm here. New business. I made this discussion, ratified purchase of F150 empty fuel from the enforcement vehicle.
I think y'all tabled this last time, maybe, I guess.
Postponer. Did we figure out what happened?
Just as I say in the communicator from the last time. And I did double check with our CPA today. The money, the money was budgeted for the three vehicles, and the $40,000 was moved over according to our budget from that surplus. So there was like a hun- there's $190,000. Because the three vehicles were through the ARCA funds. Am I saying that wrong?
No. Three vehicles, the random.
Were budgeted.
Were budgeted.
They were budgeted. And then the detailing, I'm sorry, the detailing was through the ARCA funds. I had to go back and check all that out to figure out where that money came from. But the $40,000, it's still, it was still sitting there as the surplus. And it was passed on to me, that that money was supposed to be moved over, which is still there, to purchase the animal control vehicle.
Who passed that on to you?
Kentrell. So when Misty, Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor Proton, and Batfus were acting back there as employees, the discussion was purchase, animal control truck, with the purchase of vehicles. Towards the end of the budget, I wonder, draftman, I spoke with Mayor Proton, Batfus, and Rodriguez about purchasing the truck. I took it as, did Frank, Mr. Batfus, go to purchase the truck?
He told you to purchase it.
I took it as, he told me to purchase it from him as he.
Actually, he has, or he told you first?
Told me. Told me. Because I, I know it was a misunderstanding. I'm not here to blame him. It's part of miscommunication. So I took it personally. I went through the bylaw. Tom, from the attorney, put out a bigger new form as well. And I'm new to all of that, thanks for asking.
I do a lot of competition. We had $40,000, and he had $100,000. He asked if they could be moved over to the new budget. Mayor Proton said that that was something we had to talk to the attorney about, and called him. He told us they could be rolled over, that our cat put in for an animal control officer, which they needed a vehicle. So he asked if they could use that money for it, and he told them okay. And he did call the character, they showed that that money was allowed to be rolled over for that purpose. So that's why I don't understand what the issue is. Because it was already approved at some budget, so why, if it's under $50,000, I'll buy it. And I'm pretty sure the program has to come back for us, Kentrell.
Well, at that time, it wasn't, we weren't going by those same procedures. The council was basically running the city's degree and everything. That's the reason I had a question on it. So.
But it was already.
Mike, does that, you understand? Just miscommunication.
I'm not going to go into this out here.
Okay. Make a motion to your ratified purchase of the F150. Bless you.
Thank you.
A motion by, a motion by Councilmember Garberro and second by Councilmember Blais to approve the purchase of the F150. For the animal control vehicle for a customer with surplus funds from F1223 capital nothing vehicles causing the budget. Any further discussion?
This was, I know we talked about it in the meetings, but it was never actually approved to purchase that particular vehicle. It was approved by the rank of, not that one.
Right.
But to whatever. I don't, I don't really have a problem finding it, but I do have a problem. Stuff has lived through the past. Each, each lived through the past a little bit.
And I'm assuming that nothing like that would happen again.
Yeah.
Right? What you, Richard, oh, Roger. That's a little bit called, that's quite an expensive mistake.
I will, you, you do have purchasing procedures in place now.
Right.
Any one question? Is this worth having out there? Does it include any outfitting? Does it need outfitted?
It's still going to be outfitted. The total price of that vehicle along with the three randos, you still have money left over from the 190 that you could use. The plan, talking was to take the air control cage from the other F150 and move it on that one.
Next, I'll, I will be asking station, because in our protestant lobbying out to show me that the tribe is showing who are needed to be removed off of that vehicle, they would get placed onto the new vehicle. So that conversation did take place. Because he took me out to show me exactly, so we wouldn't, we get out there and move it to another vehicle.
And it shouldn't take much to put.
Put the decals on it?
Yeah, decal on it.
Because it's not going to be lights and all of that stuff. So decal, put the cage on it. You may want to do like hazard lights, just so people drop by, we're going to get something.
So I'm just gonna hate when they're asking, because whenever you're talking, you're interacting with codes.
Well, the vehicle costs $45,000, it's on the bylaw as well.
Chair, call for a vote.
No, yes, sir. I don't like the terminology that we label this as a mistake when we have two people, one man, council member Rodriguez saying that the guidance given to Chief Kentrell purchasing. So I'm not sure how, what they, that was a mistake, thank you.
Well, even Chief Kentrell, I'm only mission says it was a mis, very much a miscommunication, so. That we're not responsible for that. Is that correct, too?
As a correct, I'm not going to sit here, throw. Say here, you can help anybody. It could have been miscommunication. A lot of things. But during that time, a lot of things were. Cities don't do a lot. And putting high administrators, trying to staff members involved. We were behind on doing the budget, so that was a rare, that's my fault. So, again, I'm not going to sit here and focus and put blame on anybody who's a, could have been miscommunication. And not let it happen, sir.
Yeah, I hope I understand, sir. You know, that's fine, but the only thing it should have been ordered on. And that got messed up somehow or another. We got it, right? Okay, but. Perfect example. We had to mess up, double check, and move on, keep done with it. It just reminisces to the way things used to do. I have to want to do things the way things used to do. We should dot our dot whistles, cross our p's and dot our i's and make sure we know exactly where somebody says something. It's fine to double check and make sure it's right. I believe, it's not a big deal, it's not, just, it's just stuff that we should be doing. We should do it in proper manner, as a power, as my concern.
Council, if it is in the budget, is approved to be in the budget by the council, it's $150,000 on the bylaw. Why should it have to come back to us again for a note of...
Well, it should come back to us because we make a budget, a thing we want. Sometimes that budget leaves the wish list, and something may happen between the time we buy that purchase that might affect away the money that's in there. So, yeah, we need to know what's happening, we need to look. I mean, it's not a big deal, it just occurred, so we need, yes, I think we need to look at it.
Especially in the context of that particular season, again, as Kentrell mentioned, things were different. The city was doing day-to-day operations in the city. Now we have procedures in place. The city administrator has the authority to do what she needs to do, and so that's a good deal. Back then, we were in the city. It's not casing. So it's not practical, having to do it anymore.
Right, context is key. And then you have purchasing policies in place. The question is, you know, expenditure for 252 local government codes, it's, we have the $50,000 cap. So give us that expenditure as far as any kind of state law violations concerned. Also, not only that, we also have a proper purchasing agreement, so it's purchased through that. So, but going on to the future, I mean, you have purchasing policy. I don't believe we have one of those.
We were in purchasing policy.
You were. The council was making day-to-day decisions, so it was not.
What city administration?
We had an acting city administrator that gave that direction, so. Yes, that idea, that is, that is very, very good. There it is, that's what I'm saying, for, I don't know, the line of time that happened. That there was policy broken. He did as he was directed, but now, if that was to happen, I guess it would be different. But if it's still under $50,000, we still shouldn't have to come back to the council. And that's down, however, it's yet.
So you've put a cap on her expenditure for, right, $15,000? So I'd say you will see some of these come back to the council. You know, state lots, $50,000, they all put it down to $15,000.
$15,000? Wow.
Okay, so first off, I never gave your experience about this. We did talk about it, but he was supposed to be getting quotes for a F150. He was supposed to get any quotes for a garage, for different manufacturers. He was supposed to get any quotes for a vehicle. I never received those quotes. So you bring up the annual budget, and it was budgeted. What exactly was budgeted for the garage?
You're the one that made the budget. You asked the, asked the attorney if that could be done. We did, so why, where did you put it?
What, what was in the budget? There's two vehicles, potentially SUVs, and one truck. We bought three randos. So no, it was not in the budget. We made, we bought three randos, three SUVs, instead of two SUVs and two trucks. So the savings in the budget is a lot.
Was that there, people? I, I can verify that the money was there, and checked with our CPA to confirm those funds were still sitting there. That $40,000 surplus was sitting there. And when I was told, I assumed that Michael had the ability at that time as the CA to make that determination, because it was under $50,000, because it was on the bylaw. That's, that was my conclusion when I wrote the check. So I, I wrote the check. I did it.
I'm the everybody's.
I know, I'm just saying. So I never even thought twice about it, because looking at the funds, they were there. They were a surplus, and then you still have 100-plus thousand, $150,000 that was still sitting there for the other vehicles, so. Which stands for a reason. It just did. You're an animal control officer. You have to have a vehicle to carry the animals in, which you cannot carry them to the back of the control unit. So, I mean, it stands for a reason. Everything makes sense, except for what you were saying, that you didn't. You're just like Kevin, saying that you didn't do that. You did do it. You didn't direct him to buy it. That everything makes sense, you didn't have a truck or the animal control. If the $40,000 there is on the bylaw or it's under $50,000, I mean, everything makes sense, except for what you were saying.
So for, why would I agree with everything the council, except for that decision?
That's only a reason you would know, Mark.
Chair, call for a vote again.
Councilmember Garberro?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion for a vote. I had a meeting discussing directions in the city, this favor regarding the RQ for city ownership.
So I was supposed to bring you back some response from auditors, and I did get a few responses, but none of them were positive. This is auditing season, and so I think after speaking to one of the auditors, maybe if we remove the forensic audit out and move it off to itself, by itself, or you could even go back and look at the response you got from the auditing services, if you can, because they didn't make any action on it, to do the forensic audit. But most of the response I got from the, or three, that I got a response from was, it was heavy, right now in auditing season, and they could not fit us in.
Because of, because of the forensic audit?
I think so, because that's, that was the very first thing, from 2018 to 2022. The second one was that they don't do forensic audits. And these are, this is mostly local, Weatherford, Parker County, Johnson County people that responded that I know. And then the third was to check back after the audit season's over, and we'd just be doing a late audit. My concern is that we need to have an audit for this past fiscal year. We've got to have an audit, so we don't get behind, because that does cause problems with your bond rating. And if you want bonds in the future, you've got to keep your ratings up. So, and by law, we're just supposed to be done by March every year. You can get a little behind on it, but I don't think you're part of the GFOA. I'm a member of GFOA, so if we ever wanted to start filing our reports and get recognized on our reporting system, on our audits, that's something I want to look at in the future doing, so. So you got to do it on time. doing, so, um, so you gotta do it long term. And I think once you look at this past fiscal year, that might throw the other plaques out that we had talked about before, that will trigger them to go back and go, okay, well now let's go pull eighteen through twenty-two, and see where we're at there. That's kind of how it's explained to me, I've never been a part of a forensic audit, never had to have one done in any city. Um, I have, I have dealt with being behind on audits, and it is not good, it takes many years to recoup from them. So I would ask, or it is my recommendation to the council to allow me to republish this, redo the RFQ and remove that forensic audit, and let's get a auditor onboard that will take us even at a late date, so that our audit can at least be within, before we start working on next year, because we've gotta have some numbers, some good numbers to go by, so.
I'm gonna go with the city administrator's recommendation for personal, that's one that I agree.
My question, okay, we do the audit, we give it to a regular auditor here at this point, I want them to act, put it out and get a response.
Well, the same.
That, eight weeks, how long is that?
Well, I have to publish it twice, and they have to be a week apart, so last time I, uh, I was trying to look through here, assuming I published it, I published it December the twenty-eighth, January the fourth, I advertised it in TML, you have to have fourteen days, so January the eighteenth was the fourteen, January the eighteenth was fourteen days for them to respond, um, and then I was bringing it back to you here in February, so I tried to stay on the schedule for it, just so that we're staying on the schedule, so it'll take about a month to six weeks to go all the way through the process again. And by then, a lot of the auditors are already gonna be finished with their audits at other cities.
In my opinion, is to go ahead and apply for a regular auditor now, and then a month from now, apply for a forensic audit.
You can, I think the only response you got from that one was this Wissling, Smith and Brown, was one response, one and only response that you got on our forensic audit, if you want to do them separately. So.
If we hire somebody, maybe they will do it for that, more people will be out of the season, they may have more time on it, but I do want to do the revenue, get your regular audit going.
Yeah.
I guess at least we don't have the same problem we did last year, uh, not the whole we had in the budget, in our, in our plans.
Well, I'll be back.
Figure out where, make sure things work, what we're supposed to do.
I will be coming back to the council probably the end of March, early April, April, because I'm working with the CPA, and there's just some housekeeping things that need to be done to your current budget, where things have kind of been misplaced, and to give you a better look at what the budget is, and it'll be a little bit different, but, um, we've been working on that audit for the last two or three weeks, so.
Did you say the week or week to the?
The CPA, your current CPA, Randy Collins, or Sophie.
Before we get too far down that rabbit hole, your recommendation is to do the RFQ for the audit, and clean the audit, and then move on after that to.
You get your forensic audit, okay, because we've gotta stay on track with your audits.
So, Justice Herbert, may I motion that we should overreconcile?
I'll second that.
Well, we've worked on our decision, I actually haven't, especially in direction.
I have one question, uh, or Ellen, Sarah. Did we ever find out, remind me, did we ever find out why Merrick, Queen and Abby decided they still?
They responded to, I called to ask a question, and I never got a call back, you have a copy, I gave you a copy of their letter, and that, that was the only explanation I received.
So who reached out to the Will and Smith and Brown to see if they still wanted to offer anybody?
Yeah, I can, I haven't, but I can, but I still have all the information, if I could have it, I'd be right here today.
So if you want us to do it first time?
Yeah, that was your only response. But if we redo the RFQ for the forensic, then, you know, we can get a lot more, maybe, maybe not, but, I mean, that was your only response on the forensic audit.
So if we not do a RFQ for a city auditor, and at the same time do an RFQ for a forensic audit?
Can, and see what come out, and see what we get back.
What was your decision, or how, how was your selection criteria done, smart, did you just, there's the people you know, or whatever?
I sent it out to four that I've worked with in the past, everything else followed the local government code, I published it, and I published it on TML. I was quite surprised because, well, really, I wasn't surprised, because it is audit season right now, and it's a very busy time, and I had to actually call these that I sent them to, because I didn't get a response, I'm like, I know that, you know, they know who I was, and so calling, they're like, we, everybody we have is out in the field, so, and I know, that's very true right now.
So is the guidance to do one RFQ or two?
I'm making a motion that we do two RFQs, one for a, I, I, one for a, I have one for a forensic audit. That makes sense to me, what, what do you say, Ms. Herbert?
I'll do whatever y'all want to, we can sure do it that way. Let's see the direction.
So let's, there's other discussion of the recommendation of the guidance, the staff would be to file for both RFQs, the audit and the forensic audit. And C, discuss take possible action to approve the semi-annual payment due to Chapter three eighty-five between the City of Godly and Bloomfield Homes, I'll pay you in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents.
This is your semi-annual payment to Bloomfield Homes on a three-eighty agreement, program agreement, buying between the City of Godly and Bloomfield Homes, they provided all their information that was in your packets, and it's in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three oh eight, fifty three.
Are they not required, are they, are they, are they supposed to hire people from the city, how they, or who?
I haven't looked at that far in sort of three-eighty agreement.
Uh, this remember the one, three?
And I said, I, I know it said purchasing those supplies locally.
No, well.
Well, they provide their sales tax information for us, but.
Okay, that's, well, it's not a type of agreement, I didn't see that in this one, so, I didn't see that, just, you have a whole lot of time to look at this, I didn't know if it's in there, and if it is, are they, I usually hire people from the city Godly, not around it, if somebody from, did that require them to do that thing?
Yes, I'm looking at it right now, I've seen it in there. It's not like here.
I remember I did one, it was discussed, not this one, they're supposed to do things for this, uh, school, is like the community involvement, uh, soon they do, I really don't know, but also supposed to try to hire someone from the city, not just, not just Johnson County, but the City of Godly.
It says acquiring property for development, constructing improvements, buying taxable business, real property in the city, creating and providing opportunities for the city to profit.
Yeah, so that, that's just your standard. I mean, you can create a program, and you can start adding some of those conditions.
I'll never approve of no three-eighty agreement. You do like, you are deals for certain people, uh, but this, this is fine, but, oh, we're gonna give you property, you can do with what you want, we don't, then, you know, subject two years, and you don't see anything good, but you'll be your property.
I'm making a motion to get burned in the general three-eighty, and mine, the City of Godly, with a total of two thousand, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty.
So, I have a motion by Mayor Lieutenant Hatfuss, and seconded by a council member Herbert, to approve the semi-annual payment between Chapter three eighty-five, uh, between the City of Godly, Texas, and Bloomfield Homes, I'll pay you in the amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and fifty-three cents. Any further discussion?
Yes. No question here, Dean, these, again, doing these for, say, uh, retail establishments that have seed, that can grow, I suppose, that, what is Bloomfield's sales tax, for the, you say, a sales tax receipt contribution, what did they produce in terms of sales as a home builder, since sales is, I think, sales tax is part of the whole, you know, you don't have to charge sales tax on yourself a home, right?
The only getting taxed on building a new home is, uh, the landscape, right, that's not the only part that's taxable, for sales tax.
Where did the sales tax?
You're adding a lot of abnormal taxes to the city.
Okay, where did the sales tax receipts come from?
So specifically, it says use tax.
And you find a little use tax?
That's a great question, because the sales and use tax are kind of together, um, you know, a lot of times with reviews, you have like a site's sales and use tax, so if I was gonna purchase materials within the city limits, then that would be taxable to the site's, where you're gonna install, does that make sense? So if I, let's say I buy a lumber here in the city, and then I install it in the city, that would be the sales tax that we're talking about, so you could be charged, there's some of this, you don't have it here, this says use tax receipts, showing managers' net receipts from the state of Texas, from the collection of lumber, saying they're collecting use tax, and those by the city for Chapter three twenty-one, attributing to collection of use tax by companies, issue, issuance companies, that's a direct thing that's taxable, how they're used or consumed in the city, that's, that's what I would remember, consumed in the city is, oh, yeah, consumed is, in the city is, a purchased, installed, on-site, in city limits.
Not necessarily purchased in the city, but using their houses home in the city that lives.
So sales tax is gonna go to a site where the, in that comes in there, in, in general, that's the site, yes?
So they're buying twenty-five thousand dollars worth of material inside of Godly, and using it on homes they're building in Godly?
That's how, that's how that should apply, so, unless there's some other way that they're getting use tax, um, you know, the controllers send it back to the city, saying they're building in the city.
Trent, you got it.
So just a clarification on that sales tax, um, say a smaller builder is buying material in present, in the city of present, they assess that tax for where the material's going, so if I buy a lumber that's in present, Henson's, Henson's charges tax as it's sold to Godly, and Godly collects that sales tax on all that material, however, most big builders, like, I'm just gonna say most big builders have a tax number, they're not paying sales tax on that material, um, they're, they're doing it a little different way. When we buy material that's anywhere in the City of Godly, Godly collects all that sales tax, per the two percent.
If you were gonna negotiate an agreement with the municipality for a general fund use tax to be repaid to you, what would that entail?
So if I were negotiating an agreement, it would be on the, how much property tax value that I was adding to the abnormal, or if I was bringing in retail, um, it would be a portion of the added sales tax that I'm bringing to town for a limited amount of time.
Okay.
Yeah, so, and, and I could just add to that, so the way that you do this for materials that are installed at the site, is you do what's called a separated contract, with your contractor, your subcontractor, okay, the separated contract establishes the site as to be in the city, the materials that are being permanently installed in the city, and so there, there, and all of that is factual, pending facts, you don't, you don't have language in here that's that specific, but if you're to do this in the future, I'm working on it.
I tell you. This was, this was way before toes, so you guys can review this. Okay, one fact is, that was it, I suppose?
I mean, either way, what you have is you have the controller still sending back to the city, saying and confirming the taxes that they made.
No, I get it, and it's just that it likes to know a little bit more in depth how it works for future models, I mean, I'm not going to just say, how does this work in order to understand it, because it's just, you know, there's a sales tax on this entity, so how do we get there, you know, you got the receipts, you know, that's probably what I was wondering.
Yeah, those are great questions, actually, you can, you can use that as an incentive, you can automatically build an incentive.
Yeah, I understand.
And so if you, if you require them to do separate contracts, and the taxes go to the city, then you get, you know, rebate for taxes that come from separate contracts, so what happens, you have someone purchasing in the city and installing in the city, and everything, taxes to the city, and then you can rebate that much, and sound good, thank you for bringing all that sales tax to the city, it doesn't have to be a hundred percent of you serving for you.
Thank you.
I have a question, with this agreement, every six months, does this, we need to come back to the council?
No, we brought this back because we just, we wanted to be sure that y'all understood, because you, I think you're gonna see some more of these, there will come to be, there have been questions with other three-eighty agreements, and so we did, we, this is Angie and I have discussed this and saying it was best to bring it back, just for the question that I don't understand, I mean, the agreement's already approved, you already have an obligation to pay as long as they're meeting the conditions of the agreement, um, but we wanted to bring it back just to make sure y'all understood, you know, especially with the discussion of expenditure forty, that's really important.
How many three-eighty agreements are there, all this question, you remember how I go, three now?
Three, does all that have any information?
Yeah, so there is a, this on the controller's website, anytime you're doing a three-eighty agreement, you need to upload the agreement onto the controller's website. Those, those are all kind of new laws, we've done the last few years, um, but that's probably the, who the best place to look, I mean, most municipalities haven't even uploaded everything, so I think we have three, three that I'm aware of.
Three.
But there could be more out there from the past, but.
Somebody give all those shells on it, give you a question in this one.
Counsel, before we move to further discussion, what, what do you, you just, okay, sir, there are free things out there.
Okay.
Okay. We're back for the vote, Justice Herbert.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Motionist Carrie five-zero. I'd be discussing possible action about the resolution under R zero-two, two zero two-four, zero-five, providing rules to conduct proceedings for the city council. I'm gonna make a recommendation that, uh, council makes a motion to table this, or I'll start postponing this to the February twentieth meeting, since it's just in our time, from the council.
It's actually what I was gonna do, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to postpone out of the, sorry, the February twenty?
Yes, sir.
February twenty.
Councilmember Herbert made a motion, councilmember produce consecutive to table, to postpone this to the February twentieth meeting, and further discussion. Justice Herbert.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh.
Motionist Assis five-zero. I'd be discussing possible action about the order zero-one dash two zero two-four dash one zero eight, ordering a general election and special local option election, determining whether the voters are distributed out of desire to allow sale of all advantages, including mixed advantages in the city to help on the. desire to allow sale of all alcohol beverages, including mixed beverages in the city to be held on May fourth, two thousand twenty-four.
Big motion to accept I A N E S entirety.
Aye.
A motion by councilmember Yarborough and a second by councilmember Mice to accept I A N E S entirety. Uh, any further discussion?
I assume there was no fair, about signatures.
I'm sorry.
I assume there was no fair, five signatures.
For your.
Yes.
Something's bringing, yes.
Get triggered there. I know it was over in there now. Quiet. So, yeah. So there's here. I heard you.
Any further discussion? Councilmember?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero to accept I A N E S entirety. We have no higher security interest. We'll be moving on to executive session pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter five fifty-one, Texas Department Code, section five five hundred point zero seven four, which no matters appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of public officer, from the first director, Kevin Frigetti, and section five five hundred point zero eight seven.
No.
Discussion of the right of non-abpendant negotiations on park development and river build development.
Hey, Mayor, I, I understand, uh, Kevin's not, I just don't see him here. But I was just going to record and ask if he wants to over here.
Uh, Mr. Frigetti, if you're here, would you want to get public here? Mr. Frigetti is not present. Your jury from open session at seven point two.